What do you need to declare? By the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda are the R two Board of Education norms that are available. And the next item is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda of November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular open session meeting.
I'll second it.
Have a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, next we have the MSBA Monthly Board Report.
Welcome to the November edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at efforts to combat the teacher shortage issue in Missouri. In October, the Teacher Recruitment and Retention Blue Ribbon Commission submitted its report to the Missouri State Board of Education. The commission made nine recommendations for lawmakers to address the educator shortage. The State Board of Education approved the commission's nine recommendations and pledged to bring the findings to the public and lawmakers. Missouri's teacher shortage is most urgent at the elementary school level with fifteen hundred and sixty-one vacancies last year. There were an additional eight hundred and fifty-two openings for special education teachers, according to the Education Department. Former MSBA President and Blue Springs School District Board President Rhonda Gilstrap was a member of the Blue Ribbon Commission. She explains the process for the recommendations.
The process included many facets. First and foremost, members needed to be educated on the landscape of public education and the current state of the Missouri teacher workforce. We collected data from other neighboring states to see a regional comparison, which included average starting teacher salary, the education wage gap, as well as benefit packages for teachers, for all educators. We also researched the retention rate of new teachers.
The commission has prioritized its recommendations into three timeframes.
We developed a set of recommendations that were categorized by immediate, short-term priorities, and then long-term priorities. And I think that coming from the commission, the number one priority under immediate was to increase the starting teacher salary in state statutes and continue funding to support the new teacher baseline salary grant program. Short-term priorities included establishing a fund to support LEAs, which are local education agencies, and providing increased salaries. And then increased support for mental health resources for teachers, school leaders, and staff. And then, under long-term priorities, a couple that were included were salary supplements for filling high-need positions and then as well as offering salary supplements for teachers with national board certification.
Although the recommendations have been submitted, Gilstrap said the work is far from done.
Our boards of education in Missouri are diligently working to find solutions, and we will continue to do so as we strive to strengthen that workforce. Now, our work is not done as far as the commission. The next thing we really need to look at, and I know there's not a school district in the state of Missouri that doesn't, hasn't come across this, but another committee is formed to look at the culture and climate.
The State Board of Education, in conjunction with the Blue Ribbon Commission, is hosting a series of public engagement meetings in each of Missouri's eight congressional districts. Check the DESI website for the recommendations made to the State Board, as well as the dates and locations for the public engagement meetings. It won't be long until the Missouri General Assembly convenes for its two thousand twenty-three regular session in January. Education issues are likely to be the subject of considerable discussion, as is the case most years in the Missouri Legislature. MSBA's Director of Governmental Relations, Brandt Shields, expects certain issues to come up immediately in the session.
Nothing is really new in education and the policy that the legislature looks at every year. In fact, issues that probably came up, especially there were hot-topic issues that didn't pass in the last legislative session, or even the legislative session the year before that, are probably going to come back again. You know, expect to see things talking about charter schools, talking about virtual schools, talking about expansion of vouchers. Those are probably going to be big, hot-topic issues coming into session this year.
Between now and the start of the session, there are things that board members can do.
You know, board members right now, especially with those legislators who are just newly elected in this November election, get the chance to know those legislators. You don't want your first opportunity talking to them being when it's time for them to take a vote in January, February, or March. Start building that relationship now. Bring them into your schools, have them know what great things are happening in your districts, because that's going to help you tell your story when it's time to make a difference in the legislative session.
The MSBA Action Center has a new look, but will host the same helpful resources to assist you in being an effective advocate for your public schools and the students you serve. This includes legislative summaries, tracking of committee hearings when the legislature is in session, and calls to action on critical issues. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and thank you for all that you do to ensure all students succeed.
I just want to point out, there are many things on that list, immediate, short-term, and long-term, not all, but some, that we've accomplished here, and that's why, one of the reasons we have a great district that we have, so. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the guidelines for public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. Public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Per policy BDDH dash one, public participation at board meetings, the following guidelines and procedures will be followed. In order to speak, their public participation, public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president at the beginning of the year. The public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period. Next, we have the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. Our first item is always notes of appreciation. We do not have anything to share with you, sorry about that. Next, I wanted to share information from parent teacher conferences, because they're held on October twenty-seventh. Here on this slide, you see, and in board docs, we have the same data. The percentage of participation by building, Bloomsdale Elementary's participation was ninety-one percent, and I'm going to round. St. Genevieve Elementary was ninety-three. Middle School was thirty, thirty-one, and the High School was almost thirty-six. When you compare that to last year's data on this slide, the High School had a slight jump in their participation, the other buildings a slight fall. Those are the numbers from our parent teacher conference, and the parents who were there. Some of those conferences were in person, but some of them were offline.
Excuse me, Dr. Boyd, does that, I mentioned virtual and telephone, does that count as like in the ninety percentile?
Yes, they count those thirties percent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The next item on my presentation, I want to share that Bloomsdale Elementary, I received a letter, it's attached here in board docs, from DESI, from the school counseling section. Bloomsdale is the recipient of the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Geist First Award. I think I'm saying that right? The Comprehensive School Counseling Award. This acknowledges their dedicated work and their receipt of the nationally recognized Missouri Program Award, which happened here in two thousand twenty-two. So Mrs. Roland, I think Mrs. Drury, plans to be in Jefferson City on December third at the State Capitol to receive that award and that recognition. Super proud of Bloomsdale Elementary, super proud of all the hard work that Mrs. Roland put into that application. I'm thinking it took her three years to do it. So, so very impressive, very, really well deserved, if I remember right. There are twelve recipients in the state, so. Very proud to be a part of that, that was awesome.
Congratulations.
Yes. Next up, we have principal reports, and I'm excited. We have some great young presenters today to talk to you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks again for the opportunity. May I introduce to you Ms. Charlotte Mooney from the middle school.
Hello. My name is Charlotte Mooney, I'm in eighth grade at St. Genevieve Middle School, and I just want to share with you some of the highlights that we've been having recently. So, recently, we had our first round of wings. We have wings once every quarter. And some of the activities we have during wings, we have basketball and volleyball board games, and we can do chalk outside. And Mrs. Woodard's Facts Three class. Mrs. Woodard's, Mrs. Woodward's Facts Three class did a project where they went down to the elementary and they had the kindergartens draw a monster on a piece of paper, and then they made the monster out of belt and cotton. We had a spooky story contest in the ELA department for eighth grade, and my friend Jayden Roth won. As you know, in the middle school, we call positive office referrals Dragons on Fire. Some of the Dragons on Fire we've had in the past month are Roxanna Hudson, Elijah Whitworth, Jacob Rosette, Addison Lawrence, Rebecca Palmer, Hallie Witcher, Brenna Wolk, Gabriella Watts, Gracie Lad, Jenna Miller, Gunner Amston, Aleah Stafford, and Jonathan Hacker. The spotlight award for this month is Carlo Bosler. Some of the things people have said about her is, even with the chaos of her volleyball season, she continued to provide, to provide guided and meaningful instruction for her students. She engages readers and makes kids who normally don't read enjoy reading. She rocked it with volleyball girls and was still a champion in the classroom for our kids. Rock star teacher, amazing coach, thank you for the behind-the-scenes work you do for our students. I have resigned my ELA teacher, and I personally think she's a really good teacher. Some of the things we have coming up ahead are picture retakes, grading period cutoff, S U M S Fall Play, PJ's Donuts and Hot Chocolate, and JHS Movie Night, Winter Band Concert, and Winter Choir Concert.
Before these girls get started, I wanted to thank both parents for making the extra trip back in here to make sure that these girls could present. They gave up one of their power hours and a handful of lunch and recess to make sure that they could be ready for tonight. Both girls were also out sick yesterday, so they might have pushed it just a little bit to be here tonight, so enjoy their presentation.
Good evening. I'm Ellen Clayton.
And I am Tess Huffman. We are here to present for St. Genevieve Elementary this evening. On the first slide, we have some events that happened during the past month. In early October, the BTO put on their Me and My Events. They had dodgeball for the boys in the morning and the dance in the evening for the girls. We would like to thank the High School for allowing us to use their gym to host these events. We would like to thank Dr. Boyd for allowing us to use the High School gym for these events. We would also like to thank Citizens Electric for putting on a safety presentation for our third and fourth grade students. Citizens set up different stations at the football field and track area. Third and fourth grade students also enjoyed pizza, drinks, and a snack courtesy of Citizens Electric. We again would like to thank Dr. Boyd and Dr. Nix for allowing us to use this area for the presentation. We would like to thank St. Genevieve Elmen, St. Genevieve's McDonald's for allowing us to use, to have McTeacher Night. Part of the proceeds collected during this event were given to our building. We would also like to thank the teachers that worked the event and the families that participated. On the week of October twenty-four, fourth through October twenty-seventh, we celebrated Red Ribbon Week with special dress-up days, presentations, and lots of students learning the value of making good decisions for a brighter future.
The first-grade classrooms traveled to the Cave Conservation Center for a field trip. It was an amazing oppor, it was an opportunity to learn about animal habitats. On October thirty-first, we held our Halloween parties and costume parades. Due to the parking and space issues, we had two parties, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. We were very excited to be able to invite our parents to attend the parties this year. Last week, Mr. Kingery and Ms. Gag had lunch with the October students of the month. Each student also received a book of their choice that both Ms. Gag and Mr. Kingery signed.
Good evening. My name is Elodie, and I'm a third-grade student at Bloomsdale Elementary. I'm in Mrs. Boma's class. I'm happy to share some wonderful things that have been happening at the ELA. Our first slide is our Positive Office Referrals. These students have been nominated for exploring one of the seven habits. We have Trinity Hudson, Avalia Sam, Maya Winter, Aiden Schweitz, Aleah, Lily Braun, Gabrielle Keith, and Aiden Schweitz again. The next slide represents all the students who met their first-quarter reading goals. These students set their only quarterly goals. Mrs. Hubbard, Des Lees, and they both from our book vending machine. On October twenty-fifth, we had McTeacher Night at McDonald's in Bloomsdale. We had many teachers, students, and parents show up. We raised six hundred ten dollars and eighty-six cents for our school. On October thirty-first, we have our Halloween parade and party. Mr. Feyer led the parade throughout the halls at our school. We all got to dress up in our costumes and follow him. We then had class parties after our parade. It was so much fun. Last week, we had our first-quarter awards assembly. Students who received an award had to walk the red carpet while they were cheered on by the crowd. The different awards were Certified Smile Maker, which is someone who is a good friend and lifts others up. Awesome Author, someone is, someone who is a great writer. Working Wonder, someone who's a really hard worker. And finally, Dragon Dragon. This is someone who displays the seven topics in the classrooms and around the building. We had our Veterans Day assembly yesterday, and you will get to hear about that at our next, at your next meeting. A few other things ahead are CTO Dancers Shop and our December Family Fun Night entitled Some Heat Dance That Were A Dolly Good Time, thank you.
Elliot.
My partner's speaker, and she, she picked over the night, it was on in the morning. And she just came from dance class, so we are grateful that she's going to present. All right, so the first slide, I put a couple of pictures that are just something that we had going on this month. It was full of a bunch of different things. So, starting left and right, we had, we talked about having our career fair. And so, we had students that were able to walk around during the school day and speak with different career fields, schools, and different job opportunities in the area. And that was also paired with Parent Teacher Night and Food Truck Outfront. And then, the next picture, it's kind of dark, but that is the during classroom. And they were making these raids of influential during people for Halloween. In the third picture, that is the child development class, and they're actually doing adult activity where they are pretty much hopping and happiness during labor and learning about that. And in the one photo, we have our Red Ribbon Week Assembly, which was Next Era came and they sang songs and had a bit of a pep assembly while also sharing their story. So, this month, our Rotary Student of the Month was Kate Beckett, and our L T of the Month was Ari Taylor. Then we have our Positive Office Referrals, and we have a whole lot. So, we have Wyatt Spring Campbell, Dustin Harris, I'm not going to do that time, so I can actually do that. Matthew Barton, Phan Karen, Kyle Fly, Jack Carlo, Arielle Taylor, Tyler Peter, Renee Bo, Addison Giler, Lexi Giler, Fallon Mitchell, Schweitz, Ezra Wolf, Carly Cornell, Drew Maranin, Gabby Sarway, Taylor Armbruster, Lovey Moore, Cole Nicholson, Grant Williams, Owen Bowman, Evelyn Thomas, Mia Schweitzer, Damian Wheeler, Riley Corbett, Schweitz, who's here tonight, Hollins Sanvaro, Chase Thompson, Autumn Werner, Chase Bo, and Aiden Roth. Okay, so next up is all about sports. So, first of all, starting off with football, they ended their season with Dexter with a win of fifty-six to seventeen. And then, they ended eight-three. So, for our girls' chemistry, the whole team qualified for the game, but I'm surprised by Hollins Sanvaro, who was a Stanford student, but she was also absolutely, she made fifteen at state, and she won the class division one. So, she's pretty, she's pretty phenomenal. And our bottom one this year, they may say, yeah, but where we did their, they were the fifth champs on October twenty-fifth at Flatterburg, and we had a pep ass for the first time. It was, it was a lot of fun, and I think that that really brought the win, yes, they did really, really well, but the ambiance of the whole thing was just super uplifting and super fun. Second one, we had that home that we won, quarterfinals that first one, and then obviously state at CMO, and I'm so happy, that's so much to talk about. We have mentioned that Web City was coming to visit, and Web City, we had two of their school staff come in and show them around with all of our different unified programs, things coming out of the school, and showed them in the front locker room and upstairs into the classroom. And they just followed us around the whole school to get an idea. They actually not have more ground interested in walking around the learning ladder unified programs as well. And afterwards, we went to the common grounds and showed them a little bit of our community involvement within CMO as well. But I think that middle school, they may have a student who won it. We did too. Nadie Flea was, she actually like ended up winning first place for the ninth and twelfth grade. Mr. Bass has a creative writing class that she's making, and that was the story that she entered in that, so that's pretty cool. Oh, yeah. So, then she called it to be eternal, and then I forgot that I emailed today, I emailed her today and asked her her favorite line from it. And her favorite line was, Hannah didn't care about the mess, she never has cared about the messes, mistakes happen, right? That, that was, that's a pretty good line. So, our Teacher of the Month this, this month was our middle school and high school French teacher, Miss Bosa. So, the thing that has been said about her was, the reason I nominate her for Teacher of the Month is because she always does her best for her students, no matter how she is feeling or the mood she's in. She also has a grateful respect for her students and treats them like their own people, like their own people, and has never made me feel uncomfortable either. She's always been supportive of me and wanting to help with things that were going on when I was on vacation. She went out of her way to help me get the work that I needed for the week I'd been gone. She has made learning her subject fun and willing to even teach us and help us with other work if she was able to outside of that subject. And then, we, then we have, so, we had a school day going on. So, it started, the students actually grew this year, part of broadcasting and other group interest in speaking with Big S Speaker Kelly Bond. And he gave advice on reaching your dreams, your careers, going to Hawaii. And that was being able to take the flight, go to the person, make it all the way to your dream career. And he answered any questions that students had, and gave the best advice that he could to help all the students that were interested, and that was during first hour. Then we moved on to students were running around helping to decorate the fans, other students helped to decorate the region hall, where Valley students met us, and we served the veterans at the regional hospital. From there, we also took a picture with the veterans all together, and then loaded up for the parade, which all of the schools were able to stand out and watch and wave upon. And then, we had our simply pretty good day. Now, I touched on this last time, we have a little bit of updates for these. The Commons mural is finally finished, and it looks amazing. Hannah Agger was able to finish with her design, nice, being a person on the top headphone, the headphones installed for SB to a certain person. And there's a quote at the top, actually from a song, and it says, but it also represents our goal at S B H S to make everyone feel included and at home and like family. And then, we have the Re Memorial, there's a little bit of update on that. We have topped two artists, Kinsey Wolf, and he is interested in doing a theme, so there's Mr. Robertson and Mr. Rockstore, two memorial, two memorial from the Re. And I think that's all.
You should all go back.
Good job, Doc.
See them report, but citing, yesterday, there was a snack, wouldn't say tall, but it had the parts that dragon. I don't know if we all got them, but I know I did, and I appreciate it.
That was our grades on the P E, so I took that one. Mr. Two, your head behind, that's a copy of the grade for me. And just take different ways to be able to get back, and it was just, it was very hard for me, it was really a lot of fun. Our teachers, I think, really praised it, and it was the opportunity to be out in the community and see some folks, and they all took on different things. They were coming down to common grounds, and they were changing light bulbs and cleaning, cleaning, you know, a lot of snowplains down there for the, down in common grounds. So, it was really just a lot of different Fridays around the community throughout the day. So, it was just really a lot of fun, and it's kind of a way to get back.
Just want to, as far as the police, and they got it, I didn't eat it all, and they deserved it, but it was very much appreciated, so. And I also want to point out that, I mean, definitely, everyone here is a super good representative, and here we've got more than normal compliments, two of them, because there was a, the whole, right there, the whole gym, saying God bless the USA at one point, which was wonderful. And then a compliment that it was pretty, 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 so, so, everyone.
Piggyback on Dr. Doctor, Mr. Boba, when I was able, my husband's in the color guard, he's retired, that so we attend, because it's so dear to us, and so we were able to go to all of them this year, and they were all actually amazing, both the elementaries and of course, the high school. We serendipitously had lunch with Mr. Bonds, but we didn't know Mr. Bonds, and we didn't know he was a guest speaker, and we just happened to sit down next to this awesome gentleman, it took us a whole lunch, and he like never told us he was the keynote speaker. next to this awesome gentleman, talked for the whole lunch, and he like never told us he was the keynote speaker till the very end, he said, well, I gotta go, I gotta speak up at high school, and I'm like, oh, look at you, are you sneaky? But anyway, it was just a really nice day, yeah, thank you. Or a few days, actually, it was over a course of three days, yeah.
Thank you to the students, I mean, I think principal reports could have gotten any better.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you very much.
Well. And that's what I wanted to say, thank you students, you did an amazing job. And for those of us who work here, I think our hearts became two sizes bigger, so, thank you for that. And parents, thanks for taking the time and bringing them tonight, we know you're busy, but it was greatly appreciated, as you saw, it was awesome, so, thank you. Okay, the next item on my report, there are a couple, there are some reports on earthquake and safety, earthquake and fire drills that we held. And something that's not on my report that I want to share is that Mrs. Jamie Blue and Mr. Josh Gettner completed their eighteen and a half hours of new board training as required by Missouri law. I have a letter of congratulations for both, from Melissa Randall, Executive Director at MSBA, a certificate of completion, and you've earned your MSBA pin.
There you go.
That is my report.
Thank you. Right, next on the agenda, we have unfinished business, and the first item is the instructional programming presentation, elementary special education.
Let me get it pulled up. And I always like to list the teachers who do the presentations, I'm hoping that I caught all of them. So if I miss someone, I apologize, but there are a lot of people involved in this presentation. And before we start, in the presentation, you will see students' faces blurred out for our FERPA, Family Educational Rights Privacy Act. You will however see our, our co-teaching classrooms, so the faces in those co-teaching classrooms are not blurred out. So I just wanted to say that ahead of time in case you were wondering.
There are four speech and language pathologists for the St. Geneveve District servicing students from early childhood all the way up to twelfth grade. The S L Ps include Jody Agger, Lindsay Anderson, Ashley Regelsberger, and Casey Serge. We service a variety of students with many different eligibility, such as language impairment, speech sound disorder, autism spectrum disorder, emotional disturbance, learning disabilities, and other health impairment. We help students work on language goals, which could include following directions, answering W H questions, formulating grammatically correct sentences, as well as social language goals, such as appropriately initiating, maintaining, and terminating conversations. We also help students produce certain speech sounds that they produce in error with speaking conversationally. We also work with students with fluency disorders or stuttering, and students who use alternative communication, such as pictures or a device to communicate. We can see students in the speech room or in their classrooms depending on students' needs. We also serve the students for R T I, Response to Intervention, which includes working on speech sounds for students who have not yet qualified for special education. Our roles include prevention, which is screenings for at-risk students, evaluation and identification of students with a speech or language disorder, treatment of students with speech and language disorders, as well as collaborating with teachers and parents.
Good evening, my name is Mary Habler, and I'm an occupational therapist for the St. Geneveve School District. This is my second year as an O T in the school setting with previous experience in outpatient pediatricians, field nursing, and I've been a three-day teacher assistant. I can simply service children from early childhood all the way through high school age. These kinds of services, per year directments, when golden mouthers pass or margination, they fall on their knees, and were console. The skill that I find in O T is much more than addressing handwriting, fine motor skills, typing skills, and plus graduation work skills. An O T listed unwound deficits effective skills, such as bilateral coordination, crossing the midline, three plus integration, visual motor coordination, visual perception, fine motor coordination and strength, feeling motor skills, sensory processing, posture, executive functioning skills, and so much more. Typical session for childless fine motor delays usually start with some type of fine motor or a first started strength activity, whether using fear puddies, or they like to do a ring toss game where they lay on their stomach on a peanut ball. And then some form of visual motor activities, such as a painter's pencil pad. And then I'll address our handwriting skills, so this I'll go in, if they need visual peers, tactile peers, if they need a plainboard, weighted pencil, or whatever, or there's other things that we can provide. And then when addressing transition work skills for my older students, I look at executive functioning skills that enable us plan, focus, multitask, and memorization skills. There is a link provided down below if you want to learn more to the school setting for an O T, and also A S B A has a lot more resources out there.
The tails program is an innovative learning environment that integrates traditional classroom teaching with behavioral counseling. Students in this setting unfortunately often come from very troubled, underprivileged, and poor socioeconomic on the phone, and subsequently have severe emotional behavioral disorder. In the past, these students would have been separated from their respective peers, might have placed in the alternative school setting, or home. Our tails programs, so with the keeping these students in school with their peers, provides them with the emotional behavioral counseling services they desperately need, and gives them a fun, safe environment. The unique, individualized student rewards program encourages students to work hard and find a environment for strides to create a positive interaction with your peers and staff. It gives them a safe space to learn how to express themselves and want to help each other.
And I'll point out before we move on, the tails program is a joint effort, we work with the Community Counseling Center here in the community to run this program. So the picture that you see up towards the left with all the adults, that's, that's the team that works with Mr. Cox, our teacher.
Hello.
Sorry, listen to this.
Hello, my name is Kara Herman, and this is my fifth year as a special education teacher.
My name is Danielle Hessler, and I am a first-year special education teacher. Mrs. Herman and I teach in the two self-contained special education classrooms at St. Geneveve Elementary. We both service K through five students who meet the following eligibility criteria: autism spectrum disorder, emotionally disturbed, intellectual disability, language impairment, other health impairment, and young child with developmental delay.
We provide specialized instruction in the area of reading, math, written expression, adaptive skills, social skills, task focus, functional skills, and behavior management. The skills the students are working on and the level of support vary by the names of that student. All of the students require small group or one-on-one support to be the most successful. Between our two classrooms, we have fourteen students who are inside regular education classroom less than forty percent of the time, and one student who is inside regular education classroom forty percent to seventy-nine percent of the time. We have attached a few videos and photos to provide a glimpse into our two classrooms.
Hello, here at St. Geneveve School District, there are three special education teachers who service grades kindergarten through second grade. At Bloomsdale Elementary, Cheryl Burke Bigler provides services for kindergarten through second grade students in the resource room. At St. Geneveve Elementary, Teresa Carroll provides services for kindergarten and first grade students in the resource room, and Kim Brown provides services for second grade students in the resource room and in a co-teaching classroom. While in the resource room, students are given specialized instruction in a small group setting. Students are instructed on adapted grade level material and are working on their I E P goals. Here, the students are given additional resources to be successful. Second grade special education teacher Kim Brown and regular education teacher Katie Thompson work together in a co-teaching classroom. Together, they use the parallel team and station teaching strategies to provide individual instruction through the use of small differentiated groupings and strategies made possible by having two teachers in the room. Co-teaching increases student engagement and provides more individual attention to students. This graph represents students kindergarten through second grade in the district and their eligibility area. The number of students serviced in the area of reading kindergarten through second grade at St. Gene Elementary is nineteen, and Bloomsdale Elementary is nine. Specialized instruction in reading includes basic reading, reading fluency, and reading comprehension. In the area of written expression, the number of students who receive services at St. Gene Elementary is sixteen, and Bloomsdale Elementary is five. These students receive specialized instruction in alphabet naming, sentence structure, writing mechanics, inventive spelling, and paragraph writing. In the eligibility area of math, the number of students who receive services at St. Gene Elementary is nine, and Bloomsdale Elementary is four. These students receive specialized instruction in number sense, math operations, word problems, place value, and applied math. In the area of social and emotional learners, the number of students who qualify at St. Gene Elementary is seven, and Bloomsdale Elementary is two. These students receive specialized instruction in character traits and regulating, regulating their emotions, calming strategies, and social skills.
In this video, you will see the third and fourth grade special education teachers from St. Gene Elementary and Bloomsdale Elementary as well. Whitney Hilbert teaches third grade special education at St. Gene Elementary along with Ashley Bowman, who teaches fourth grade at St. Gene Elementary. And then myself, Paige James, teaches third and fourth grade at Bloomsdale Elementary.
This graph represents the students in the third grade within the district and their eligibility areas. The green bar represents St. Gene Elementary, and the blue bar represents Bloomsdale Elementary.
We have a total of eight students that qualify in the area of reading, which include reading comprehension, reading fluency, and basic reading.
Two in the area of math, four students in the area of written expression, two students in the area of emotional disturbance, and two in other health impairment.
Within our district, these are the disabilities in which our students qualified in, in the fourth grade. Between St. Gene and Bloomsdale Elementary, we have thirteen students that qualified in the area of reading, nine students in the area of math, six students in the area of written expression, one student qualified under autism, and four students qualified under other health impairment.
Station teaching allows us to divide the students into strategic groups. Two groups are teacher-guided, while the other groups work independently. This model increased instructional intensity, student engagement, and student focus. This model can be used for pre-teaching, reteaching, and specially-designed instruction.
During this math lesson, the co-teachers use the team teaching model to deliver the lesson, then moved into tiered groupings, where each group works with the teacher for a specific amount of time, then the teachers move to another group.
Parallel teaching allows us to split the class in half and both deliver the same content in a way that best fits the group's needs. These small groups make it easier to identify struggling students and provide appropriate interventions in a timely manner. The resource room is a separate setting aside from the general education classroom. Students come to access the educational materials in a manner at which best fits their individual needs. The special education teachers engage the students in lessons that include technology and manipulatives that enhance their learning experience and aid in their academic success.
With my current caseload, I only teach one co-teaching math class, and the rest of my day is mainly resource minutes. I work on students' I E P goals along with adapting from their grade-level curriculum and providing them the manipulatives and things they need to be successful.
Hello, here at the St. Geneveve Hello, here at the St. Geneveve School District, we have two teachers who service our fifth-grade special education students. The two teachers are Mrs. Portal and Mrs. Huck. There are currently twenty-five students who receive services from us. On the graphic you see on the presentation, you will see that there are twenty-five students in each service area which we provide those services. On the light blue, you see the total amount of students in each service area. The darker blue, you'll see how many students are in our CO-TOC setting. And then in the orange, you will see how many students we provide that service to in their resource setting. On the table provided, you will see different resources and strategies that we use within the students within side of the CO-TOC, and within side of their resource setting. We use our district curriculum, providing modifications and accommodations to the students as they need them. And then there are many different resources we use within side of the resource setting. And throughout all these settings, we conference with the students, and we have them track their progress. So we're always having that collaborative conversation with them. And then lastly, one thing that we do for all of our fifth-grade students where they transition to the middle school is invite the middle school special education teacher, along with their process coordinator, to our I E P meetings, where we can have that collaborative conversation with the parent and their current teacher on a student's current progress and current level, so we can discuss class options as they transition to the middle school. And before they transition to the middle school, we also take our fifth-grade class to go toward the middle school, and so they can actually see what the middle school looks like, and then also give different class options that they have once they get there.
And that's the end of their presentation.
Quite a lot of work. Very special. All right, next on the agenda, we have set procedures for the annual school board election.
Yes, on board docs, you have the actual resolution that needs to be adopted. But tonight, we need, you need to set the annual school board election for Tuesday, April fourth, two thousand twenty-three. We have three terms expiring, Mr. Eric Bosler, Mr. James Perschner, and Mrs. Martha Resinger. Filing opens on Tuesday, December sixth, at eight A M. Filing continues in district office on regular business days, so that's Monday through Friday when we're open, eight A M to four P M. Filing will not occur on days that the office is closed due to inclement weather, and filing will not occur on Friday, December twenty-third, and Monday, December twenty-sixth, because the office will be closed. Filing ends on Tuesday, December fifth, at five P M. Tuesday, December twenty-seventh, at five P M. Sorry, I was looking at the five, making sure I said that. So there, I do have on this slide the address to district office if anyone is interested. Okay? All right?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the set procedures for annual school board election.
I have a motion, second, all in favor? Can you oppose? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, under due Next on the agenda under due business, we have addition of the behavior support specialist.
Yes, and I'm thankful Mrs. Jury made it back. Um. So we are proposing that we add a one full-time district-wide behavior support specialist for this school year. Um, we would like to create the position tonight and hire at the December board meeting. Um, we have students identified with behaviors in special education that are in. Uh, we are seeing a lot more students who have a hard time self-regulating, um, themselves. Um, so Mrs. Jury does have money from the American Rescue Plan for IDEA, IDEA. For those who do not know, means special education. Uh, so she has funds to address the learning gaps, the learning losses, uh, to help bring in someone to support our students and our staff deal with these escalated behaviors. Um, she has structured it so that we, we will use the ARP money this year, and with some other things that she's doing with some savings, we'll be able to cover next year. Um, so I did provide a link on this slide to the job description. The job description is also in Board Docs if anyone is interested. Uh, Mrs. Jury, do you want to add anything?
Um, no, I just, it will work because the position will work for students, and we'll also support educators in working as special education students to restore what these students with behaviors and learning gaps and disreadjust them to what we consider the longest school life. Um, I do also want to, um, I was thinking, she was huge in helping come up with what this is gonna look like.
Perhaps Dr. Police said this is K twelve, correct?
Correct.
And will this position help with the name, um, the special here, that we want, correct?
The contracted supports.
This position get, um, full benefits, a positive salary determined, I guess?
It would be.
Teaching salary?
It would be placed on her certified salary schedule. So, yes, full benefits.
Is, is the ARP money at like a something that's kind of always been out there? Is that a post-COVID thing or?
It's a post-COVID.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not really that familiar with it, so what?
Well, we've received ARP money under U.S.R. two.
Okay.
So, that, yeah.
Jamie, have you seen a increase, a large increase in like non-verbal serious behavior issues?
What I see and how we work through this.
This year, we have to spend them by September thirty, two thousand twenty-three.
And it's IEP-specific, not five of fours? Okay. Jamie, related but not specific, I've heard you mention step a few times. How valuable is it to have a social worker here in the district?
You know, we have a child that's not residing at home anymore, and now suddenly we have a, we have an ultimate caregiver. If I need them, what kind of documentation can you have? Walk, walk me through that. But she is so, so valuable in that regard. And then just, you know, I mean, she, she knows the inner workings of so much that goes on, so many families that go on. Hey, well, you know, I, I focus so much on the high school, but you know, she can sometimes help get a perspective on, you know, other fam, or other children that are looking at the elementary that are tied to this child that really just helps bring a lot of things to life, so.
I know it must be a lot of time. There are unique inside knowledge systems, the community system, support system. And how those things work every once in a while, I believe, is okay with me. We don't always speak the same language, since she's had a life of her own. She, she truly is.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the addition of a behavior support specialist for the district for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next. We have adjourned.
I make a motion under revised Missouri statute six one zero point zero two one. Motion that the Board of Education adjourn to a closed meeting with a closed record and closed vote after a short break for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items of business. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals, and preparation including any discussions or work product on behalf of a public government body and its representatives for negotiations with employee groups. Okay, and then we have a little call, a little call voter, I do. Don't always forget that part who calls it. Okay, so roll call vote, Jamie Blue?
Yes.
Eric Bosler?
Yes.
David Bova?
Yes.
Carolyn Diesel, yes. Josh Gettinger?
Yes.
James Kirchner? Martha, Martha Riesinger? All right, vote is carries, seven zero.
Thank you.